Yeah.
You and your sister have a good time like that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do.
Anyway, some guy that worked society with guitar and he said, he knew you well. Way down in guitar.
Something good.
Oh, wrong.
I'd like to see that old.
He's had a.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
Play.
I mean, I don't want to see.
Like, we're here.
Wow.
You didn't count that.
I mean, we told them.
He had a coworker.
Yeah.
Coworker.
Yeah.
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 Well, how are you?
Good.
Hey, Ralph.
Yeah.
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 It's running over there right now.
That's on. I was gonna call you today, didn't do it. I was gonna call you, didn't do it. I guess. All right, buddy. Yep. That clock is right. That clock is right for a change. Yeah, that's a.
All right, seven o'clock. You can go supervise and they'll come to order.
Bring him back.
If.
Sure, be glad to you. Gracious Father, we do love you and praise you and just want to celebrate this day you've given to us. We just want to bring glory and honor to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Let's make the United States of America a true republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing is. The agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The discussion on the foreign machinery tax was advertised as public notice twice, but it's not on the agenda. And just to make things crystal clear, I think it would be good to amend the agenda to include that item.
All favor of the committee to raise this up.
All right.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right, next thing will be. Insert. Oh, we got. Final limitations, all you got, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Evidence approval minutes. January sixteenth.
Some moves on, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All favor.
All right.
All right. Opposed. Motion carries. November, public hearing. Are we still doing that?
With the approval of those minutes as presented.
All favor.
Aye.
They oppose. Revenue reports, expenditures, and payments favor. Want to put them all together?
Excuse me.
All favor. Aye.
All right.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we give the public comment section. We have Mr. Stuart Price this afternoon.
Thank you very much. I'm Stuart Price, and I wanted to get back to you to tell you about some work I've been doing with the General Assembly. They just posted a substantial resolution today, yesterday, patronized by Senator Chase regarding Maplewood landfill. Today, I'm sorry to say that I learned that this resolution did not made it through the, through the wringer. I reached out to Senator Chase weeks ago when she helped usher in SB thirteen fifty-five, the coal combustion residuals bill. This bill would require Dominion to close its existing unsecured coal ash, coal ash landfills, both in Chester and at three other plants in Virginia. The Chesterfield Power Station being the primary source of that waste product. This legislation requires Dominion to recycle a portion of the waste and place the remaining coal ash deposits in a secure licensed landfills. This could be a keen business opportunity for Amelia. Dominion, Dominion would have the option to either construct licensed landfills on their own property or train through the ash off-site to a licensed facility like Maplewood. After speaking with my contact at Dominion, I learned that the power company does indeed seek to maintain its coal ash on its own property. However, the legislation does state that if Dominion chooses to relocate the waste to an off-site, an off-site landfill, it would develop, it would need to develop necessary transportation and management plans. Also, it would give preference to local workers and rail transport, that is minimizing truck transport through communities. The licensed Maplewood facility with this rail transport infrastructure would clearly be the leading vendor should Dominion choose the off-site management option. Therefore, since a state bill may not endorse a specific company, I wrote a resolution and worked with Senator Chase's staff for editing. Senator Chase and her staff were most helpful in this process and in advocating the business expertise here in Amelia. However, it didn't, it still did not make it through. Now, both, both the Chesterfield Power Station and Amelia County, of course, are in Senator Chase's district. The resulting resolution before you advocate the Maplewood operation and explains how this facility offers nearby proven coal ash disposal options for both Dominion and the Commonwealth. However, this resolution was relayed to the Senate Rules Committee, Senator McDougal of Mechanicsville, where it was delayed. I talked with his staff today. The resolution was not stopped, but it was delayed, delayed until the end of this session, which is set to close on Saturday. And at this date, modification and other comments would not be, would not be possible. I'm under the impression that this, this would not be favorable to reintroduce this legislation next year. I would be more than willing to do that, to reintroduce this piece. But if all parties are not, are not in agreement as to whether or not this Maplewood should be highlighted, well, then my hands would be tied. Thank you for your interest. If you ever need any support regarding environmental impact statements or waste management or government outreach, please remember my name. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
Good evening. Hello. My name is Allison Creves, and I'm a resident of Jetersburg. I live on Perkins Road with my son Gregory. And I hear also about the landfill. And so the story I wanted to share with you tonight started yesterday about three thirty in the afternoon. And maybe I should have been attending my meetings, but I just wanted to share this with you. So we came home from school and were, I was outside the home, he was inside the home, and there was a large explosion. And so I thought my worst fear was that my dad's house next door had exploded. But my first initial reaction was to call the sheriff's non-emergency number, and I asked if anyone else in the Jetersburg area had reported such a noise. They were not aware of any. My next step was to call the landfill, and when they answered, they were not aware of any blasting or anything going on there. My next call was to Taylor, and he said there had been some permit or something that they had notified that they were going to be doing some blasting. I inquired if that was notified through the paper in any way, and he was not aware if it had been. I called the newspaper. They had not let anybody know to that effect. So I'm just here to let you know that chain of events. And then I also called the DEQ because I didn't know who else to reach out to, to see if they had any record of anything going on. I learned today from John, John Mearaby, who is part of the lands protection management portion, and he said DEQ does not do any permitting blasting. He was not sure who would. I thought with his title, he might know. But I also have a new friend at DEQ named Katie. She's also the waste management of, what is her title? She is compliance. And so she's been in the job since September, and I've learned that DEQ will be out tomorrow because I did speak to Ray York. He was kind of returning our call and then finally the new cells being constructed there, which are inching closer to our property, which abuts the landfill. And I'm excited for the county that the revenues, which are now, I think, thirty to fifty thousand a month, will be going up to a hundred and fifty thousand a month with the new contract for waste coming in. So I'm excited about that. But I also just want the county to know what's going on. I mean, you know, residents, I myself, as a neighbor, just want to be included in the loop because nowadays when you hear that type of noise, you wonder is the real coming too? And so I'm not trying to cry the sky is falling, but I just want to share with you and ask for that. I will take a tour of the landfill next week, I believe. Ray said he would work on that, and I would like to invite you all to come see. I am always fascinated by the tours there to see the trash and to see the monofill where we could take just straight up coal ash. And my original tour there years ago was when I lost faith in the landfill and their ability to contain. I mean, I know we have many standards in place, and I'm thankful we have such a well-constructed landfill with the double liner. But my first tour there, my son was probably about two years old, and the big giant tanks that hold the leachate above ground were all leaking leachate, and it was sitting in a puddle. And so my faith that what is underground could be contained was completely obliterated because we can't even, at that point in time, we couldn't control it above ground. So I'm thankful for the improvements that are made, and I'm thankful that we have power generation going off that as well. But I would also like to request that in the county will somehow create like a zone of folks that should be notified for things that are going on like that? And also to keep that in place for when, you know, an emergency should happen, if a tornado should hit and that augur proof or lightning strike. You know, you just don't know what mother nature can deal nowadays. So that's just where I wanted to come here and share with everybody tonight.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. And today, if you could, I mean, there's not any more blasting going on. Today there wasn't, but whatever they're doing in the construction, I would wish you all to listen from my backyard into what you hear. And I know today there was a little cloud cover, and so it was going to reverberate more. But I mean, there were, it sounded like thunder just on the other side of the hill all day. And then there were also noises that sounded like whales talking. I mean, it just, so I don't know what we're doing, but I'd like to take a look and see, and I would like you all to take a look as well, just to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Any other comments? All right. This is in the public comment here. Committees, organizations, reports, and presentations. We have. Vacancy on Social Security, Social Services Board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Stanley Wilkerson to be appointed to the Social Services Board.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, VIVAT Monthly Status Report, Chief. David Whitaker.
You have the report included in your, your package. There's nothing really significant on there this month beyond they're trying to fix potholes, but they're growing faster than they can be fixed. It looks like they're, they're still prepping Porthouse Road and starting to prep Selma Lane for pavement action come the spring.
Which part?
The, the long portion. I'm gonna sneak an email into him and see if he can stick that other quarter of a mile in there. It still doesn't meet the minimum requirements, but maybe they'll have some tar and gravel left over and dig and continue on.
Just for your verification, we're going up there Tuesday morning at nine thirty to meet Kevin. He's gonna take a look at it, but not for that specific reason. Motivated when they cut the ditches or cut the sun of the road and laid the trash to the side, it makes rain night. So he wants to look at that and see if he can roll it or whatever.
I'll put the word this year. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions? Traffic study on Route six oh four, Jono Road, results of the recent traffic study.
We, we got the paperwork back on that, and it's about twenty-five or thirty pages of just graphs and numbers that doesn't, don't really mean anything to the layperson. numbers that don't really mean anything to the layperson looking at it. But I did include Kevin's email traffic on a summary report for you, and it pretty much says they've looked at that, they've looked at the accidents and all the movements and stuff out there, and they do not see a reason to change those speed limits. And that's from the bridge at the Abomatics coming back to Mattox. That's the section they studied.
What part of that study did you?
We had a individual came before y'all a couple, three months ago, and he had some concerns about the increase in heavy truck traffic on that route. Similar, we had someone come in just the other day on 609 with a similar issue.
What is the cost to us for that?
The cost to the county is not. It doesn't come out of our VDOT funding. It's obviously a cost to the statewide VDOT pot of money to do these studies. The one that was just done on 604 was, that's probably a mile at the most between that study group. To do 609 is probably a 10-mile to 12-mile stretch of road to do that entirety of that, so, you know. I don't know if the people that came to talk to me got hold of their supervisor or not. I did give them Mr. Scott's number to have them call. I don't know if he called you or not.
I've talked to him.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Next is the Mayor of County School Board, Dr. Weeden, Dr. Smith. We have two favorite educators.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's nice to be here this evening. At the end of the day today, it's nice to be able to say also, we are one day closer to springtime, and I think we all know how nice that's going to be. I wanted to share a couple of things from our board meeting last week. And of course, last week, we couldn't foresee that we'd be missing today, but the school board did determine that any further makeup days, we would not be taking them from spring break. There are three days that are listed in our calendar, and I know that's been creating some anxiety for staff and students and families all over the county, but we will be taking makeup time from additional learning time that's planned into the calendar. And so, that's a bit of good news. Another thing that I asked the board to do last week was to adopt an administrative regulation that is guidelines for implementing proper financial accounting procedures, and it's a lengthy document that was developed with the assistance of Ms. Janet Brown, who's the financial consultant, who's been doing some work with us this year. This document becomes part of school board policy effective immediately and covers many areas, but it includes budget development, expenditure controls, accounting procedures, purchasing procedures, payroll internal controls. And we're surprised that there was not already a document like that that was governing financial procedures, and so, we have this implemented now. And with the timing of Harper starting March 18th, we'll begin training and information sessions with the employees so that we can get this fully implemented. But I just wanted to share those two things with you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
He mentioned spring, and with spring comes teacher recruitment fairs, and so, that's a big initiative that we'll be pursuing over the next six to eight weeks. Starting Friday, I'll be attending the teacher recruitment fair at Raffigan University. I'll leave tomorrow night and go up March 5th. Myself and Mrs. Rainey, Sister Press Mathematry School, we're going to Liberty. March 8th, myself, Dr. Medley, and Mary Harrison will be attending a fair at Longwood University. March 19th, Mr. Vernon will represent us at J M Muse Recruitment Fair. March 20th, Mr. Cummins, Ms. Valerie Harris, and Ms. Byer will go to BCU. March 21st, we certainly hope that we'll be able to attend one at Virginia State University, but we're on the wait list right now, and that would be Miss Sally, Mr. Upadaya, and Mr. Cocke. And finally, March 25th and 26th, myself and Mr. Vernon will be going down to the Big Hampton Roads Recruitment Fair, which is in Virginia Beach as part of our spring conference. So, we've got several teacher fairs. We're looking for some specific positions that we know about already, high school Spanish being one of them, but that would be a hard-to-fill position, so we're hoping that we'll find some good candidates there. And then, of course, while there's, I'm going to look out for other positions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to say that we really appreciate your opinion and allowing us to be in the world. It helps.
Much to your favor. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District, a resolution for Donald Rupert Blanton.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you all beforehand, before I give the resolution to Rupert's sister, that appreciate Piedmont Soil and Water. Certainly appreciate y'all's support, Donald Wise, and anything else. And if you ever have any problems or recommendations that we may be able to help you with, certainly let us know. In the coming years, we've heard that we've had more, instead of farm programs, it's going to be more urban-type programs, so hopefully, we can work some of that into the account. As you know, right now, we do have a grant out for septic tanks on Flat Creek. I mean, that's good for December. But we'd like to give this resolution to Rupert for all the work he has done through conservation practices. Let me read it to you. Yes, it's stated. "In recognition and memory of Rupert Blanton for his outstanding farm conservation management practices, be it known among all within the county of Amelia, Virginia, whereas the Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District serves this community through programs and activities that enhance the quality of our surface and groundwater, protect and promote soil health and conservation, and conserve our natural resources. Whereas farmers who demonstrate outstanding management practices which conserve our precious natural resources are selected and recognized for their contributions to the Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District in cooperation with the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Whereas the Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District recognizes Rupert Blanton for demonstrating a commitment to the conservation of natural resources on his farm through excluding livestock from streams and water bodies, utilizing a nutrient management plan, planting cover crops between growing seasons, installing repertaking buffers, hosting farm tours, and supporting conservation educational programs. Therefore, be it resolved by the Amelia County Board of Supervisors and the Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District that Rupert Blanton is hereby commended and remembered for his lifetime commitment to protecting and enhancing waters that flow beyond farm boundaries for the conservation ethic he demonstrated through his farm management practices for the legacy of his conservation values and endorsed this 20th day of February 2019."
On behalf of Piedmont Soil and Water, I'd like to present this to y'all. For all the work Rupert has done, it's certain to be missed. He probably practiced more new practices that came upon than anyone else in county at this point in time. So, we appreciate all the work that y'all have done, and I'm sure y'all carry on. Thanks a lot.
I'd like to thank y'all so much for this award for my brother Rupert. I know he would really have appreciated it. Conservation was very dear to him, and he felt that it was most important to be a good steward of the land and the forest, so we greatly appreciate this. Thank you.
We'd like to thank you also, and we'd like to thank Rupert for all he's done for the county of a world in these years, the balance he's served, and the people he's met, and the way he presented the stewardship of his property to everyone, which is just unbelievable. We thank you.
Yeah, he will be greatly missed.
He will.
And I'd like to thank again for y'all's support towards our budget, because you know, the monies that come into Piedmont Soil and Water can only go on the ground. It's all administration and things like that. We have to go elsewhere. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Department of Planning and Zone Capital Improvement Plan.
You were sent with your, or under a separate cover, a copy of the capital improvement plan that's put together by the planning commission. The process started back in August, and inputs came to them. We racked and stacked them, kicked them around, and interviewed with the folks that implemented or asked for the monies, the projects they were working on, and the package that you received is a result of all their efforts. And what they were looking at for FY '20 is a total of $820,000 worth of expenditures. It's a little bit higher than the monies that are there, but there's a little bit of cushion in that budget line, and they felt real adamant about bringing the, as do y'all, the playground equipment into a one-year cycle to get that problem taken care of over the elementary school. That's how that number got to that point. I'll try to answer any questions you might have on that. What the planning commission is looking for from y'all tonight is to accept that as a tool during your budget process, but I'll try to answer any of those. I'm remiss, I don't have a copy in front of me, so I may have to sneak one from somebody if you have questions.
Y'all have any questions?
Chairman, I'd just like to say, you know, this goes from fiscal year 2020 to 2024, right? Again, just a planning tool, and this is like an annual thing, I mean, you had to update it anyway, and that's good. I looked at some of the figures in it, and it's not realistic, but again, guidelines which we should, we could, as we put together budgets and so forth. And I understand you got pretty good input from your other departments and so forth, so you've got all of that included in this report. I would, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this district.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries.
New business, community employees, we run the pool, Mr. Wilkerson, at large. That's it. Next, the special event permits for Amelia Bluegrass Festival, applications in your book under Item 7.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? No. Motion carries. Then we have a presentation of Morphil Mine.
Yes, sir. Mr. and Ms. Dunaway are here, and Ms. Dunaway called. She was requesting some time to brief the board supervisors on their things that they've got going on there, so.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up.
Didn't need to raise that mic.
Briefing board, please.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you very much for having us. We love to speak. We appreciate that very much. Being able to speak before the supermodels here. My wife Sharon and myself, we've operated the Morphil Mine for 22 years, actually 123 years here in the Morphil Mine. And actually, Morphil Mine started in 1985, so it's been run almost continually at full time. We have been talking with state parks about the possibility of making a park, and that's a complicated process. My wife is telling me to speak in the mic. I'm going to position after more butter. Sorry. And it's a slow process, and maybe a matter of decades of reality, but we have a small tract, a very important mine in the mineral interest, I suppose, area. We actually sell Amazonite, we sell it nationally for jewelry work, but the main thing is that thousands and thousands of people who have come to the Morphil Mine. And I'm probably spitting to the quarries as I say this, you're well aware of that, but we've probably had close to 200,000 schoolchildren come to the Morphil Mine over the years, I don't know how many adults. So, a typical Saturday when we operate, probably 175 people. They eat in Amelia, a lot of them. They'll come out in the various restaurants, buy gas, may go to the grocery store. So, it does have an impact. And Morphil Mine has been a, it's been a good alternative to going to the beach, going to Kings Dominion or Busch Gardens, things like that. So, people are looking for something they can do as a family together, and this has really worked out very nicely. So, in talking with parks, it doesn't quite fit an after state park, doesn't quite fit the heritage-type sites that they have. So, and they're small, but as time goes on, more land may be available. The Quarry is going to be there for a long time. They are a good neighbor. I had talked with them, and they have no problem with a state park right next door. Someday, that thing, this is really down the line, will be gone, but the Quarry will want out, be done, and there'll be some disposition of that property, then they could go to the state as well, at least our portion of it. And so, that's pretty much it. We had Isaac Sauer, who is a deputy director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, out back in June, and David Whitaker was there with us, the state inspector that we have. The state actually assigns inspectors to areas, and they stick with our area. So, our inspectors have been there for close to 20 years. The Department of Natural, no, no, sorry, that's Alaska. But the Division of Mineral Mining in the state government is very much in favor, but they recognize the importance of it, the uniqueness of it, it's known across the country, to be truthful about it. And so, we had the meeting. They're aware of it. We've sent letters to Frank Christman, who's the director. Really haven't heard much back. We're still pretty fresh. We've talked with our registrar, Tommy Wright, and Senator Amanda.
Chase.
I can't get the name wide right here. Chase. But so, anyway, they have responded to me. Of course, they will be glad to do something as soon as the present session and smoke is over. And so, my wife would like to say one thing, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak for you. If there's anything that, if y'all have an interest in seeing this become a state park, put some support towards it. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. This fall, October, November, I had a big celebration to celebrate the Morphil Mine on its 70th birthday on the 73rd, 80th, 85th. This coming fall, October, November, it'll be nine years of Morphil Mine has been operated. It's one way or another, which have started with Silas Morphil, that's a long history, in 1929. So, this fall, October, November, there'll be another big celebration, celebrating nine years. So, every time one of those celebrations, birthday celebrations happen, there will be a lot of, the events will bring a lot of important people around the country. It will bring in special people and so forth, and special people that are really concerned about what will happen to the Morphil Mine, because so many people are praying that it will be able to be preserved. So, wanted to let you know that should be in October, November time frame. Also, in the October, November, this fall time frame, a lady in the Bennettville have been looking on a new book that will be coming out about that time also, a book on the Morphil Mine history since 1929 on. So, there is a lot of- A book on the Morphil Mine history since nineteen twenty-nine on. So, there is a lot of history about the mine and it is very important. Uh, thank you for your time and any help at all. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you both for coming. It's very informative. For families, for those ladies and consultants.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Under item nine, uh, at the last meeting, we were, uh, requested to see if we could come up with, uh, providers to assist the Board of Supervisors and the Administrator to set goals for the future. And I have, uh, two proposals back. One of them's from Mark Rubin. Uh, he's a professor at VCU. And he, uh, he has got a, a proposal in there to work about sixteen hours and, uh, get the process done. His total estimate, and that's all it is, is an estimate, is sixty-four hundred dollars. The second, uh, proposal is from Mike Chandler. He's a retired Virginia Tech, uh, professor. Also was on the Blacksburg Council. And he's got a, a more in-depth proposal. And the cost on his, for him, is five thousand dollars. So, I bring both of those to the, to the Board and await, uh, instructions and be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Now, Mark Rubin, in his letter, said that he would submit a proposal. Did you ever get one, an actual detailed proposal? It says, "Please let me know what you think about this and I will create a proposal for Taylor."
He sent one after the board book, board book went out and said the same thing that the letter did. It was basically an email to me as opposed to an email to council.
Uh, Chairman, what's your pleasure? You want to tell them this and you want to act on it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, I like what Mike, uh, Chandler preferred. He has been fairly specific in terms of what he can and can deliver and will deliver. Of course, he has, uh, I remember we used him before, as a matter of fact, when we did the, uh, comprehensive plan, if I'm not mistaken. One of the first comprehensive plans, he did a fairly decent job. And, uh, that format was, has, has helped guide us, uh, for some times. And I, I kinda like what he has, uh, he's put together. And I understand that, uh, you know, he's spelled out the times and he's been rather detailed in terms of, uh, time allocations and, and he's talking about five thousand dollars flat fee for everything that he, I'm, I'm, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm, I'm, I'm for going with that one. But, uh, of course, that's just me.
Mr. Chairman, um, if we could, uh, perhaps inquire from, uh, Mr. Rubin for greater detail in a proposal that perhaps would, um, give us something a little bit more, uh, greater specifics. Um, I think that would, um, be a little bit more helpful towards evaluating that part of it. Um, Mr. Chandler, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Harris that, uh, Mr. Chandler has, uh, has worked with the county in times past and has already given that detail. And so, uh, I would just, I guess I would request something that's a little bit more comparable to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would, um, kind of that with the fact that his proposal that was given was so incomplete when he knew we were having a meeting tonight to discuss it. The second one is very, very thorough. I don't think we should wait for more details to come back from that guy. If this is what he prepares as a proposal, then how good is he going to be at facilitating our meeting?
We won't wait until we get his proposal back and his detail. That's, I suggest that we table it for thirty days and, uh, have another go at it. Anybody anything?
No, I disagree. I think the sooner the better. We get this going. We've already been working on this for like four months. This is an out, outcome of Taylor's performance appraisal and we can't set his individual goals till we set county goals. And I think the sooner the better for getting it done.
Anybody have any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm like, we table this for, for a period of thirty days and, uh, then we'll make a decision in March.
All in favor of table for thirty days, say aye.
Aye.
No.
No. Motion carries. All right. Uh, next we'll have the report on the, uh, water tower cleaning, the item ten in the book.
Mr. Chairman, we have Randy Jones from B and B here to, uh, present, I guess officially, the report and answer questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today, Chairman and Board. Uh, as Mr. Harvey said, you have the report in front of you. Uh, soon maybe you had a chance to read it. Maybe by the, for our time, I'm really going to answer any questions you have. And still, I guess, reciting what the report is about. Well, um, well, I presented to you the report and it was some options on what can be done with the current tank. You got one existing five hundred gallon tank. Uh, there's past due for being taken out for service, for painting the interior. There's been work done on the exterior, but not on the interior. Uh, even though this has been past due, you use a tank to take it out every ten to fifteen years. It's gone ten, fifteen years. There, I, I want to elaborate that there has been a video camera, a photo of the, of the interior of the tank. And that's in the report stating that even though there's a couple areas where there's some corrosion showing, it's not in critical condition that you have to, have to act now to do something with this tank. Uh, but second, in this report, I want to make you aware, when you're talking about taking this tank out of service, you have an obligation to provide, uh, uh, water for the consumers or users. But you also have, and we need not overlook, that you got to provide fire protection. And with, uh, I have sufficient fire. Uh, so we looked at another alternative, uh, which is having a, called a transfer water system, which has, uh, dual, uh, electrical nodes to convey water into, uh, distribution systems through connection to fire. It has, uh, causing that was like two hundred thousand dollars for that. It had a diesel backup pump should you lose power. And then you have a bulk of tank, which will be three hundred and, uh, seven, eight thousand gallons, which would meet the requirement to provide fire protection should you have a, a fire, a commercial cell, they'll notice that. Uh, that alternative, uh, is very favorable. Uh, again, I'm saying you don't have to act now. You can further that for later. If you wanted, uh, to do that, uh, and I would suggest probably when you do take the, take it out of, uh, the operation, it's probably done in the summertime when you don't have the schools, uh, in session. Uh, but now, the, the other option I looked at and gave to you in the report is a new, uh, five hundred gallon tank, a second tank in the system. It depends on the goal of the Board, what you want to do. If you want to look at having a system that has flexibility and has liability, then you may want to be looking at putting another, another tank, a newly elevated tank in service. Uh, that's a one point six million dollar investment. And that, right now, as I stated earlier, you don't have the demand for that. But having a tank in line, so when you do have to take eight tanks out of service, you can then say, well, I got another tank. I'll, I'll, I'll put, I have that in operation. That'll take care of all my issues. Uh, plus, the tank you currently have, you got about two hundred feet, which is not a lot, but you got two hundred feet from that to the distribution system. A single lap. Should that ever break or whatever, then you gotta water at that time too. And you had an emergency crisis. So, if you're looking at for that, on that, uh, basis, then you probably need to look at considering the elevated tank. If you're looking at, I just want to have me to be a temporary taking my tank out of, out of service, get it coated, which will probably last you sixty days. And get it back in service and give me another fifteen years to budget for a new tank. Maybe see the possibility that can continue grow and meet the need of another tank. Then that would be the way I would suggest that you go.
Any questions, John?
Yes.
Speak.
Okay. I'd like to clarify a few things for the public that you haven't brought up. This tank was built in the year two thousand. We entered into a contract with sediment corrosion in two thousand nine, in which the first year we were supposed to drain it and wash it out, which we didn't do. And then every year since, all we've done is visual inspections and minor repairs. This year, last year, two thousand eighteen, we painted the outside. But in the year two thousand fourteen, it was supposed to be drained and completely cleaned out, and it wasn't. Currently, there's about eight feet of sediment in the bottom of the tank. And I think putting this off any longer is the wrong thing to do. The question is, which option should we choose?
Now, there was another option, man, but using divers or going and cleaning that sediment out.
Right.
Uh, I don't promote that because right now it's not causing a problem with the water quality. And so.
I wasn't going to bring up the divers.
Okay. Uh, but anyway, I would just say, I wouldn't oppose that because it is, the sediment is not causing any water quality problem. And you have a contract that you just said with some corrosion. You have to remove that when you take the tank out of service. So, I would patent your housing layers to do for what y'all have a contract to do.
I mean, it would be perfect to hear. Air water is, according to Virginia Health Department, is an excellent check, is it not?
Yes, sir. That's no violation.
And it's no emergency to do anything to it.
Correct.
Not now, not later, unless something happens that we don't know about.
Correct, yeah.
So, we just bury our head in the sediment for a while longer?
You know, I would, I would, like I said, I would push forward. If you're not looking at doing anything, we're putting a new tank in service anytime soon. I would go ahead and start budgeting to do this transfer so you can get the tank out and clean it. Cause somewhere along the line, you're gonna need to, uh, paint the, you know, clean the interior of the tank, prep it and repaint it. Cause it's, it's past the timeframe.
You should have done it twice already.
Yes. And I just want to let you know, I'm not saying it's an emergency because we have gone into video to find out exactly what that condition is. And it has, it has held up very well. But you do need to move forward. You, you, you know, you, I don't think you can wait to say, I have enough weapons in here to promote putting in a new tank. Uh, like, you know, in the future, I think you need to, you know, to act in the next few years to get this tank out of service, get it cleaned and painted, or even move forward to put in a new tank so that you can take the tank out of service.
Mr. Wood, you have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions right now. Cause anyway, it was just, um, you know, we've gone through the exercise, um, of, uh, looking at the possibility. Cause you came in, what, two years ago? And, um, I think you came to an IDA meeting and you had a.
Yes.
Pretty heavy promotion for the new tank at that time.
I had a promotion for that because at the time, one of my options that I came across was just small water tanks, which could provide this fire flow. So, my concern was I cannot get conscious, say, do this and just hope you don't have a fire. Since then, I was getting in touch with Rink for Rain and finding, and I found out they have these, uh, tanks that they can symbol large volumes. So, when we're looking at the, the site right across from the county administrator office, they can build a tank up there in a short period of time. And we can fill that and we can have like a ground storage tank on the ground. We use a pump to pump that into the system. So, I, I can design and provide you a temporary water supply that now I mentioned, the method you, for meet that fire demand and protect the county of any liability. And so, now with that, and that you don't have to be, you know, it would be nice to put another tank in to have, like I said, the liability. That's one point six million. This is two hundred thousand divided by another fifteen years.
Well, anyway, we've gone through the exercise. Um, we knew that there were some grant funds out there. And so, um, we did go through an exercise to, uh, see if there were sufficient grant funds to, um, make a huge dent, which, you know, it did not. And so, that particular exercise, you know, we just, um, like so many, you know, we've gone through it and it did not work out. This, uh, storage tank, it's been several years now, but up near Burkfield. Do y'all do the work for them as well? Because there was a, apparently they were doing service to a tank there and they had a tank sitting on the ground. And so, I just assumed that this is going to be something akin to that and satisfy the need.
We, we didn't do that. And I'm not sure if they put in a permanent ground storage tank.
It was, it was a temporary deal.
A temporary, and that might have something, something to the Rink for Rain.
Mr. Ball?
Uh, no, Randy, you, you cleared up the most important part for, for me, uh, that, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand gallon tank that, that rain, uh, make a rainfall or something.
Rain for that.
Yeah, rainfall for that. Uh, that clears up the fact we can have potable water and fire suppression, uh, while we take the big, uh, tank out of service and clean. And, um, I, I'm not prepared to spend a million and six, but I'm prepared to clean this tank and use this temporary water transfer system you got here. Somewhere from two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And, and that's not peanuts. That's a lot of money. But it does buy us fifteen years.
Yes, sir.
And then if somewhere in fifteen year period, somebody decides they want to build a tank, then we can, uh, maybe we can start budgeting for that. But, uh, Chairman, I, I prefer that temporary water transfer system that Mr. Jonathan B and B has presented to us. Uh, that would be my, my choice of, uh, of these choices. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you most well.
Mr. Chairman, what timeframes do we need to initiate, uh, actions to get, um, get things done this summer or in a summer? If you're looking, if, uh, if you're looking to get, uh, this ground storage, um, how long is the setup going to be?
Well, the setup and everything won't be long. Only thing you have some time involved with is that you're gonna have to put a, a plan of action submitted to the health department. And so, that would, you know, maybe thirty, sixty days about plans and specs and submit it to the health department for review and process and get their approval. Uh, and that, I think then, have the county want to proceed, you know, to advertise it out in bed and get proposals in versus, you know, just soliciting one company to give a price.
Because if, uh, if we do, uh, proceed with this ground storage, it, I guess, would affect parks and rec a little bit too. Because, kind of, uh, I think there's going to be a suggestion to utilize the space that they're using, you know, in, in your proposal.
Yes, it, yes, that was one of the spaces. If we need to find another area we can, but we, we, we looked at that, selected that for the, for the report. Uh, and cause there also were two halves within the area that, that's why we were tying to, where the pumps were tying and pumping direct to vacuuming system. And the wells were put, pumped into the distribution as they currently do. And as the tank drop, we'll have a back press standing valve that feed right back into the tank. So.
And, and the last item that I think I have is, um, isn't the tank, I mean, is, uh, isn't, um, Public Works expecting the tank to be drained this year? Isn't that what their plan was?
Well, by, by the contract, yeah, the contract with some corrosion, this is that yet a tank is supposed to be taken out of service and, and cleaned and painted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, what's hers?
Uh, I'm, uh, I'm listening to, um, what the options are and what it's going with.
Did you see that on the last?
I, I saw that.
We have six.
Five, really.
Actually, yeah, I saw those, right, then. We need to, uh, well, I mean, I was, I was looking at the options here. That's option number, what is that?
One, two, three.
Option number four.
Five, really, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Option number. That's, that's where I am in this, boy.
Well, I think we both are pretty much the same.
Uh, and my ask, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Jones, are you, uh, you agree with B and B, you always guide us through this process, wouldn't you?
Yes, we would.
And work with Mr. Harvey?
We, we would, we would prepare the plans and specs
Okay.
And get their approval and administrate the, the process, because just taking that tank out of service and getting it cleaned would take about sixty days. And that's what this price on Rent For Range is based on sixty days. Of course, if you do it in less time, you only pay for the days that you use equipment. But, uh, yeah, we will help you through the whole process, you know, whatever you need.
Mr. Jones, in the, in the Rent For Rent contract, it says the rental cycle's twenty-eight days, and we're, we would be paying for two rental cycles, so we have to get it done in fifty-six days.
Yes, sir. I, I don't think that would be a problem, I just ran an opposite sixty, but.
Chief, I'd like to hear your comments.
Well, I've said through most of this stuff that the, uh, the tank, the temporary tank thing makes more sense to me than the rest of it put together, to be honest with you. Growth is not gonna support another tower for ten to twelve, fifteen years. Even if my grandiose dreams for the industrial park were to come true tomorrow, it still wouldn't support, you know, build a tank that size to support that, that operation. So, you know, the things that come together in my head and what I've done in the fast and the fuel business with the military, this makes sense to me. It's a ground bladder, is what I would have called it in the service, and, and we use those on a regular basis, and they've worked tremendously.
Okay, I'm not trying to usurp you, I just wanna give you ideas so that you can get with us here. Mr. Hart?
Yes.
I don't really have anything else to add except for it's, uh, it's gonna be a major expense, so we've gotta get it in the budget. That, uh, you know, it's not something that we can tell Darrell or Mr. Jones here that we want it done, uh, in a month or first of June, when the kids are out of school. It's, uh, it's, it's a real process, it's heavily involved, it's heavily regulated. You gotta have the money together, we're gonna go through the procurement process to, to make everything right. So we can take it and run with it, but it's not something that we, you know, we can say we're gonna do it today and we'll have it done, uh, you know, before the beginning of summer.
It's not something we can force.
That's right. We need, we, we want a plan.
But it's gotta be done.
Mr. Jones, you have a thought? You have a thought?
Well, I'm, I'm not even sure what else I can add to it. I would, I would.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, let me cut my ass there, um, Ms. Cave, a question. Uh, Ms. Cave, uh, if, if we needed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start this project, uh, during this fiscal year, how are we fixed on?
Well, as of right now, we're ahead in revenues, and we budgeted, and we're below in expenditures. So we could probably manage it, but being a finance director, I never.
This, uh, this wouldn't, this wouldn't line up with the C I P, uh, money, but, no.
It, it's up to you where it wants to come from.
Okay.
But, no, I was referring to our general fund.
It's not really a capital improvement.
I, no, no, I, I, I realize that, I always asked that question. I, I realize it did not, I just wanted to, if we could push it, but anyway, um, we, we have enough money and, uh, and checking account, though if, if we wanted to start this process in this fiscal year, we could do it, financially, we could do it.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, barely, I'm gonna, we could do it.
All right, that's one.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're, we're getting into the budgetary process right now, and so I've seen, or need, no reason why we can't, um, well, also include this expenditure as we move forward in that process. I don't see why that isn't feasible.
Anybody else question the payments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one other point, that we've been paying ten thousand dollars a year for nine years to get this done already. I think the extra two hundred thousand is something we have to spend.
Yeah.
And I agree, I agree that option five is the way to go.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Uh, thank you, the county, for the opportunity to work with us, thank you.
Well, Mr. Jones, go on for it, please. I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ms. Hart, that, that money we pay to Southern Corrosion, that annual dues of, um, payment of ten thousand, three hundred dollars, I think it is, does that money accumulate or is that used each year?
We don't think it's like a retainer. Uh, Mr. Gore would be better equipped to answer that than I would, uh, but, you know, so I don't think it's like a retainer, and they draw it down whenever we spend.
Well, I read the whole contract, and I didn't see where there was any, any gross figure of money there. They didn't show that we're in a hundred thousand dollar figure, but I mean, that's growing, I think. So it makes me believe that the ten thousand, I see the girl shaking her hand, of just a ten thousand, three hundred dollar a year that we pay, and it doesn't accumulate, it doesn't grow, is that, is that correct?
So basically, you're prepaying for the paint job on the exterior, so when they painted the outside recently, that was already built in that option.
Okay.
Darrell, come up with Mr. Jones, and we know a question you'll touch.
It's like a layaway plan.
You have to sit and listen to everything we say and do, but you know the person that does the actual work, and he takes it all, keeps it all straight, so he wanna hear what you have to say, also. What do you think about the, uh, applications that Mr. Jones has given us, and, uh, which one do you think would be more appropriate, applicable to us?
I think for a short term, um, to go ahead and get the tank done, that this is the best option. And in fact, what Mr. Scott had brought up before about, we had missed a couple of washout cycles, um, the original, the first washout cycle was not done because it was in a drought time, and we were gonna have to run those wells continuously. And the second time that it came up, we were prepared to do it, and the health department, um, required us to submit, um, a proposal on how we were gonna do it, which included the blowouts and everything at the time. So we did not move forward with that, knowing that there was fire suppression issues within the system. And we, I told, um, talked to Mr. Hart about it when he came on board about the issue and all the past administrators' issue, that, that would be an issue eventually, that someday we were gonna reach this goal. And those two washout cycles that we did not do, um, is when they came and cleaned the exterior, so we did get something for our money. And we didn't get the interior cleaned out, we didn't get the exterior washed and, and taken care of for that, instead, in lieu of the washout.
Hey, one other question, I think Mr. Jones thought. The depth of this tank and the diameter, it would be how much? What's the distance of it? How much area would we take up?
You're talking about, Paul, that the sediment and, and the, the range? Oh, uh, uh, the, but I'm not sure, well, I can recall with the damage that tank put up?
I don't need to pull it. I believe, I believe when I from Rent For Rent said it was about eight feet tall. Well, I'm not sure of the diameter.
Well, that kind of volume, eight feet tall, we'd be about forty-five to sixty feet, somewhere in that.
Yeah.
I didn't think the height would be that tall. Eight, eight, twelve feet, so it would be a, a lot of, eight, eight, something, eight to, maybe nine feet high. It can't be so tall that, that, all that, you know, charge to the slot.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else that hasn't, you know, you.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I would like to, um, I'd like to get us started, because, um, this is gonna take a couple of months to put together, is, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then we're still trying to get down to June, uh, well, she kids out of school now, and late, in late May, or sometimes early with the May or something, if it's, if it don't snow again, messing up. Uh, so we're saying it'll take us a couple of months to get everything lined up, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would say, you know, getting the designs approved could be anywhere from two to three months.
There you go. So we, um, I, I think we need a motion tonight, Mr. Chairman, to, to, uh, pick this temporary water transfer system and go ahead and put it in Mr. Jones's hands and, uh, and, uh, and Darrell, because he'll, Darrell, he'd be working, I guess, and, and Miss Jones would be working with us, and let's get this thing started. And Ms. Cave says, well, you could break the bank, so, and, uh, we've, we've, we've got to do this, we knew when we put the tank up years ago, we eventually had to clean it. So now we got to that point, so I don't like kicking the can very much, so, uh, I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, that we, uh, that we pick this temporary water transfer system, um, um, this, you know, booklet here that Mr. Jones just prepared for us, and, and we use that, and we, uh, and we ask that, and we also motion would include the, uh, the help of B and B Engineering, uh, to work with us, uh, work with our people to get this job planned and get it ready to, to be done.
As I stated in the motion, we use temporary water transfer to two hundred, three thousand dollars, and request B and B.
We, we gotta go through the procurement process.
That's right.
To get this.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So it might be, once we go through the process, it might be one eighty, it might be three thirty.
Mr. Steve.
But, you know, just so long as we're not getting instructions to call Rent For Rent tomorrow and get it started.
Right.
I, I actually didn't say, anyway, I asked, uh, B and B, and B and B is part of the motion.
Just want to be clear.
To, to guide us.
Preparations.
All right, all right, now, we can change the words in that motion just a little bit. I'm gonna get it started tonight, Mr. Hart, and get things going. And so if, if we could, if I gotta add a word or two that you think should be in there, let's get to the motion.
Can we get council speak to that?
That's fine.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think we need a motion, uh, please, I get the sense from the board, the motion will be along the lines of, uh, requests, uh, for direct staff to work with, uh, B and B to compare specifications, uh, required, uh, for an R and P, uh, for the, uh, service
I can.
Described, uh, by engineer tonight.
Good, that, that's, that motion sounds good to me. That gets us off, that gets us started, right?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, the process, you make sure you have funds.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm looking for, thank you, sir. All right, that, that motion is, then, forget mine, and we'll take what Mr. Gore gave us, okay?
So I would apply. All right. Mr. Chairman, it gets us started, but it doesn't get us finished. Can we add some kind of a timeframe to it?
Yeah, we do have to add a timeframe, too, because.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Jones would agree to some timeframe if we could set it.
Well, I mean, it's first going out for proposals, so it's kinda hard to set a timeframe. You gotta go to proposals, and then I guess you do your, I'll give you forward the services and, and then make the selection, you have to, that's the, set the timeline.
I don't think, timeframe's not necessary, in my opinion, I feel if you get, we, we just go ahead with the motion, you, and you go, your, your team's gonna work with us.
Well, in my understanding, you're asking us to, help you advertise for, uh, for firms to do the plan and specs, and we can help you with that, and then from that, I guess there'd be two other counties left to do the, the specification and plan.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Gore, if you repeat, the, the motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little unsure based on the grain, it's, uh, thank you, Bob. The motion I stated was to, to direct, uh, staff to work with the engineer, firm to, to develop the specifications required to put out an R and P for the ground tank.
Oh, okay, I, I, I'll thank you, it's, um, it's, it's, sir, but, yeah, we didn't know that by the way.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because you have, you have.
I, I thought he was credible, proposal manager.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman. Um, so if, uh, if I understood it, part of your motion, part of Mr. Barnard's motion, let me clarify, um, was, uh, for the budgetary, and that way we would know, hopefully pretty quick, how to, um, get things in the budget so they'd be ready immediately, maybe we can get working started prior to that time, but that way we would have the money where we need it. Because if we're gonna do it in the off-season, if you will, for, uh, schools, we'd have less demand, that obviously puts us in that smaller window, but we don't know that we can fit in that window until we have some details. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gore?
I had something to the budget process, um, Carl and I put seventy-five thousand in this year's budget, um, when we're looking at the option of using the, the old G C C tank, so that money's there, canal, and then if the actual work is done in, uh, July one, we would be in the next fiscal cycle, so the engineering, the, you know, seventy-five thousand.
It would be just fine, it would be just fine.
Uh, Jones, I have a, a question for Mr. Jones. Can you just make it clear why we can't use the G C C tank?
Because we, because we do not have sufficient volume to talk about that.
So it has, it has sufficient volume and flow rate for daily usage, but not for fire suppression.
If you had made a file, you'd be in trouble.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Jones.
All right, Chairman, you heard the motion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye, aye.
All opposed?
Okay, good.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks to the applicants and the general authority of authority and tech critics, the Giles and Pauls.
All right, uh, I'll make that, this is, we got a call from a consultant for the Giles apartment, uh, back to end of January, they're gonna put in for a D H, Department of Housing and Development Authority, to, uh, get some money to renovate those apartments, they're looking at about forty thousand, forty-seven thousand dollar per unit cost, and they needed the county to do some things for them to make a stronger application. Uh, those things are scored, I guess, that, because everybody knows how that works, and the more, uh, boxes you can check, the higher your rate. Uh, they're asking us to do four things. They want a C E O, which is the county administrator, response letter, uh, simple format, they write it out, we send it in, it basically says we support it. They need a zoning certification, simple, uh, letter from, uh, the Director of Community Development, it says this is, uh, perfectly zoned in the right spot, there are no problems with, uh, anything zoning wise. Then there are two things that, uh, we're gonna call an issue, uh, you could declare or tell them that it's a revitalization area, um, you know, and if you go up, build that street, take a look, kinda disingenuous to say that, uh, that's a revitalization area. Uh, it might trigger us to have to do some other things, so we're holding off, uh, we can't recommend anything like that. And then they're looking for, uh, some ordinances to be passed that, uh, would lead to a tax abatement. And the lady, when I talked to her, she was very, uh, very on point, that these are just things they're asking for to make their application stronger, but anything that they can get out of these, that we have to do. So I, I think that they asked for what would make it best for them, but they will certainly be happy with whatever we can go. So high recommendation, and Mr. Whitaker can, uh, fill in the blanks, is to go ahead and send the C E O response letter, the zoning certificate, and just pass on the declaring a revitalization area or the, and the tax abatement. This needs to be done before the next water supervisors' meeting, so we would, we'd like to have. like to have some direction denied. Application closes down March fourteenth. Mr. Whitaker, uh?
You got it, yeah.
How's that?
All right, Jones, which party? Your motion?
I'll turn it over, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep your file.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I've got a question going on, I'm sorry. Is there a move forward?
With, with, with the recommendation there.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks, sorry about that.
All right, that's, uh, this is the county which supports the report.
Uh, we've amended the agenda for discussion on the farm machinery, uh, taxation, and that, now's the time for that.
All right. You have amended the agenda for the farm machinery, um, the county which supports the comments? We're taking, uh, eleven rate and, uh, thirteen rate. Make it clear, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Well, I think we've got to, what I'd like to do is have, uh, the motion already come up and explore and cut the phones to us.
Okay, okay, there's a motion.
I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, gets the motion on for either way.
How are you doing? I've sent you a email and asked you, uh, you, you mentioned that this could cost us a lot of money, and I asked you, uh, specifically how much it would cost us in, in detail, so we can understand what we're getting into or getting out of. Uh, can you answer that now? Uh, you have got it?
The way that it is written, excluding number eleven and thirteen, is absolutely no change from anything we've done for the past several decades.
Right.
If eleven and thirteen were to be included, there's no way to tell what revenue that would be, like I explained in my email.
Okay. Do you know how many trailers that you repair? Have you been investing in the rest?
How many trailers that we have?
Horse trailers, trucks, things like that, nice, trucking trailer.
I looked at that, but I don't have those figures on me, um, and it would be, the, the issue with eleven and thirteen would be, it says in the language, "A farmer owned by a farmer for transport of farm animals or farm products." So, for example, a horse is defined as a farm animal. There are a lot of people in the county that have horses, but may not specifically be a farm or a farmer. If they were to come into me and say, "I need you to exempt my horse trailer that has living quarters in it because I use it to haul my horse," and I say, "Well, you're not really a farmer," they could say, "Well, a horse is defined as a farm animal," and then I have no footing to say, "Well, I, I, I can't exempt it." I would have to, unless there are prior established specifications of what is a farm, what is a farmer, which is all things that y'all would have to decide what constitutes a farm or a farmer, before we could even know what the tax is.
So you've been taxing these, uh, vehicles and, uh, trucks, horses, or whatever?
We have been taxing farm, we have been taxing trailers that have regular trailer tags on them, or D and V issued F tags, we have not been taxing those that have homemade farm use tags yet.
Okay, all right, I thank you so much.
You're welcome. Let me plug to you, thank you. Are you, are you asking for this, this discussion?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm not going to vote, but I know, but I know some motion on the floor, but the only discussion, um, I, I've read this thing over and over and over again, and eleven, eleven talks about trailers, farm trailers, privately owned trailers, as defined in forty-six point two, that's one hundred, that are primarily used by farmers in their farming operations for the transportation of farm animals or other farm products. See, if you put this whole sentence in there, it, it doesn't say horse, it doesn't say horses, it says that trailers that are primarily used by farmers in their farming operations for the transportation of farm animals, it does not say horses, or any part of horses, or other farm products as, uh, uh, enumerated in subdivisions A and one through seven, okay? This was added in two thousand and four. All right, then we drop over to, well, yeah, I'd say twelve, twelve is motor vehicles, uh, motor vehicles is primarily something used for, for transportation, farmers got them too, if I get by L, pickups, and, but they are used exclusively for agricultural purposes, for which they're only is not required to attain a registration certificate, license plate, and, and decal, or pay a registration fee, all right? So that's a unlicensed motor vehicle on the farm, all right? Number thirteen, trucks or tractor trucks, as defined in forty-six point two, one hundred, that are exclusively, see, they put all these words in there, exclusively used by farmers in their farming operations for the transportation of farm animals or any other farm products, same, the same thing as eleven. So, eleven stands for trailers, twelve stands for motor vehicles, thirteen stands for trucks or trucks, tractors, tractor trucks, how in the world can twelve cover all three? If we take eleven and twelve and thirteen out, and I might hate to ask, uh, counsel this, uh, Mr. Gore, how can, how can the motor vehicles and twelve cover trailers and tractor trucks in eleven, thirteen? I, I think you need to have eleven, twelve, and thirteen in your ordinance for your ordinance to, to be complete. Uh, Mr. Gore, could you, can I ask you, Mr. Gore, Mr. Gore, could you come to the microphone, please, or I, I don't hear very well, so help me, come to the microphone, and explain to me where I'm going wrong about this.
So this is a proposed, Mr. Chairwoman, or this is a proposed ordinance with the amendment, so it took out those two sections, correct?
I think that's from Danny.
Because everything got renumbered when we renumbered, when we revised the ordinance, so.
Eleven, that was strong, that was strong. For the purpose, that was covered notice.
Um, so under state law, the county can exempt or have a different class, a different tax rate for any of these categories in this statute, so they are discrete categories. Um, they're not, there's a reason they're different, so each one is a different class of equipment.
Exactly.
Farm related equipment.
Okay.
So what the commissioner has told, has advised, is that those two categories, um, eleven and thirteen, um, the county has not been exempting. So if you were to now include those in the ordinance and exempt them, what the commissioner's saying is, it's, it's unknown exactly what the cost that might impose on the county, and I don't have an answer for that. All I can tell you is, there are different classifications, and if you haven't been taxing these two classifications, if you have been taxing them and you stop taxing them, there will be a revenue impact. I don't know the impact, but there, I can tell you, they all have different classifications. Um, and I think, you know, part of the distinction is, whether or not that might, they might be registered with D and V, I think eleven and thirteen, those two categories aren't, aren't D and V registered vehicles, so that might be one, one distinction that's different between that and the other vehicles. Um, so, so again, the board can, can adopt an ordinance that excludes all of these cast categories from taxation, or none of them, you don't have to exclude any of them. You know, what I'm told is, from the commissioner's office, is that the practice has been to exclude all except for categories eleven and thirteen. So, you know, there could be an impact, logically, there would be an impact, it sounds like it's not known exactly what the impact would be if you include those two in the ordinance.
So if you, if you take eleven and thirteen out, then, then, then what happens?
All of the other classifications would continue to not be taxed, as has been the practice of the county.
So what happens to eleven and thirteen, what happens to trailers and tractor trucks now?
Yeah, as, as we're told from the commissioner, they have been.
They would, would set them up to be taxed.
As they have been taxed.
Only, only the ones that have D and V tags, so the way it's written is exactly how it has been done for decades.
Mm-hmm.
If a tractor truck or a trailer has a farm use tag on it, it is not taxed, it has not been taxed, and it will not be taxed.
Okay, so, so thirteen, so, so a lot, thirteen says trucks or tractor trucks, as defined in forty-six point two, one hundred, that are exclusively used by farmers in their farming operation for the transportation of farm animals, and, so what's, what's, what's the wrong with that staying in there?
What is a farmer?
Huh?
What is a farmer?
Well, I think we all would farm, farm animals, uh, hogs, chickens.
Right, so first of those, a horse, are they a farmer?
Uh, it, it, hey, I'm, I'm not gonna say it's not, but, but, uh, we don't have any farms being operated exclusively by horses, rather than tractors.
But a horse is defined in the code and a farmer.
Hey, that, that's fine, I'm not gonna problem with that, and in fact, I, I don't have a problem with that, it says farm animals, I don't have somebody else's word about that, the horses, there's so few horses we're talking about, it's probably not as relative, as far as.
Not really.
But, but, so, so it's a few horses in the county, but they're not used in place of tractors.
Yeah, I'm sure, Mr. Chair, I'm sure there are counties that exempt all these categories, so I, I would think that there is a model out there, um, from other counties that have a way of determining this question the commissioner raised, how do you establish a policy that defines those, those categories? So it's in the board's discretion to exempt all of those classes.
Yeah, I don't want the farmer to be taxed, first of all, I don't want the farmer to be taxed for something, he, is, is the farmer not being taxed now on eleven and thirteen, if, if they stay in there?
Arguing.
They're arguing.
Which they have.
So if you take eleven and thirteen out, that case, that, that exempts the tractors, right?
They will continue to be taxed, the ones in the ordinance are exempt, the ones out of the ordinance get taxed, that's good.
And I have talked to other counties, and almost every other county that I have talked to either doesn't exempt what we do, including eleven and thirteen, or they just tax eleven and thirteen like we do. So other counties are either taxing more than what we do, or the same thing that we do. So we go to including eleven and thirteen, we're gonna be exempting a whole lot more than everybody else does. And that's why I don't have a, a revenue for it, is because if a horse is a farm animal and one person owns one horse that they haul to shows out west, I can't tell them that they are not a farmer, because a farmer is not defined in the code of Virginia, and I would have to have a definition of what a farmer is, so that would be exempted.
Most farmers have, uh, uh, a tax, what do you call it, for the A S S office, you have a farm number, wouldn't that, wouldn't that generate a, who's a farmer?
Not, not when it says that a farm animal is a horse, because somebody's telling you that's a farm.
I got no problem with the horses. I got no problem with the horses, the only thing I'm trying to do is to keep the farmer, because he gonna lose the game by taking eleven and thirteen out.
Taking eleven and thirteen out leaves it exactly the same as it has been.
Same.
All right, I should press on. All right, Jones?
Okay.
For, uh, for definition sake, let's, let's schedule that. Will that be a reasonable way to conclude, or, um, anyway? To me, that is, if you're gonna be doing exclusive things for a farm, um, I would say you have to have a farm, so you gotta have a schedule that, and so that would, um, perhaps be that. Anyway, um, I think with the explanations that counsel and commissioner given us, we can, you know, perhaps move forward then.
All right, gentlemen, any questions, or any comments? I'm going to put it for a second time. The ordinance, that's good, with eleven and thirteen removed?
Thank you, Michael.
All right, Jones, you have the motion to remove eleven and thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed?
Uh, I, I wouldn't go to all that.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, Jones, this is your question. Your challenge, your order to move.
All right, number, item number twelve, waste management, most speed for the month was thirty-five thousand, eight hundred, thirty-three dollars. The Southside Indian Community College, those newsletter is in your board packet under tab number thirteen. Tab number fourteen is the C R C items of interest for the past month. Tab number fifteen is the regional reporter, which is the newsletter from C R C. There's a financial report from the Virginia's Heartland Regional Industrial Facility Authority under tab number sixteen. And for those curious, most of that money comes from the sale of real estate at the Heartland Park. Item seventeen, for everybody's information, since it's a new, uh, it's actually a department, but since it's a new, uh, thing we've got going on, is the D and V select compensation statement that we've got in, uh, June, in, uh, January, that's a report that you should be, uh, seeing every month. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have, any questions I'd be glad to answer.
Jones, questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the report, it says it's a statement from eleven, one to twelve, twenty-eight, two months, but it appears that it's only numbers one on it. Was there another report for November?
This was the only one that, uh, came out.
When did we have the open?
It was the fifth of the seventh.
Of November.
No, not November.
So there's no numbers, from November fifth or seventh to November twenty-seventh?
This is the only one I've got.
My, my, my question is, did we get any money?
We did, we did, uh, collect, it started off slow, but we did collect money.
So this twenty-two hundred and eighty-two dollars is just for December?
The report says.
If you look at the second page of the report, it goes from November twenty-seventh to December twenty-eighth, and it's fifty thousand dollars and sixty, six hundred thirty-eight, and that's the number that's on the two-month report.
Two-month report, statement for period eleven, one, eighteen, to twelve, twenty-eight, eighteen.
Right, but it has the same number.
It says gross collections, fifty thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars, which is the same one on the, the second, so, uh.
So I think we're missing four, four weeks of money on the report.
I, I will look into this, and I will send you the information as soon as I get it back prepared.
So, this, um, second page, the number from November to December, thirty days worth of numbers, comes out to only twenty-two hundred dollars, is that now the steady state that we're gonna expect to get as revenue?
Well, it, uh, we knew we would start off slow, people had to understand that D and V select was over here, I don't think that's a surprise. I guess we all realized that we weren't gonna be getting sales, uh, from all the boat companies that they're got, and it's, it's just gonna take a while to go in the back. It's just going to take a while to go in the back. We just had one employee over there three weeks ago. So we were closing down for an hour every day. Obviously, we lost some savings there. We're running full time now. I would just suggest that we let this thing run for ninety days, six months, and check it and see where we are, give it a chance to stabilize.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Joe. Any more comments or thoughts? With your team?
Yes. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the divers, since I was such a big fan of the divers in the water tower. It's my comment. I'd like to explain why I'm not recommending the divers. I think I'm allowed to talk about whatever I want to talk about, Mr. Chairman. And I have other things I'd like to cover. I'm not finished.
You can hear it, you're finished.
I'm not finished. I'm not out of order, and this is my comment period. Thank you. I'd also like to just mention that the ANT C has formed a committee to try to breathe more life back into the ANT C. And that committee is charged with going around to other communities that have done things we're trying to do out there. And I'm very hopeful that that's going to make some progress in the future. Also, Abigail Spandler has asked to meet with us. And we replied to her that she could come to any one of our meetings. But she would like to meet with us in private, not in private, but in a separate session. So I'd like to propose that we accept that invitation.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
I don't have anything specific for this issue, Mr. Chairman. Just further, any idea of stuff that is going to...
Mr. Chairman?
I think the D and D is doing great, hearing nothing but good stuff about it. And everybody out there loved it, and they found out where it's at. Got its own identity. I think Mr. Willock probably hit on to it back in July when he said it probably took two years for the thing to go on to realize whether it really standing or not. I think I was a good comment Mr. Willock made. So we knew it was going to be what it was, and it is what it is. And we got it where it needs to be. I don't lose any sleep over that whatsoever, my son, so I'm very happy with what D and D was at and what we're doing, what it's going to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a thing, I just have a statement to make. I think it's more, I mean, from what I'm hearing, it's more imperative that we go ahead and set up that activity with Man Chan as soon as possible, if we're not ready. I think we need to go ahead and set that up so that we can get into the gold setting and get some of this other stuff out of the way. I think that, I think that that activity will do several things for us, including growing up mountains. That's all that I have.
All right. Any other questions, the comments? We have a closed session, please, at this point. I will present to you the following.
We need a closed session to do talk with. Here from county, some legal matters. I think there's a proper voting to read into the records up there. Just delighted to read it in.
Closed session motion to discuss bar ban product agreement. We need to go and supervise the legal closed session pursuit to come. Section two point two, thirty-seven, eight, twenty-nine, for discussion. And we rule a public contract with the law. The expenditures of public funds including discussion of return or stump such contract where discussion in and open session will adversely affect the bargaining position or no negotiating strategy of the court.
Also, Mr. Chairman?
Joe, all agree or say no?
Aye.
All the parents? Don't you care for a man in closed session? We take all this.
Okay. You can hear it? Testing.
This mic has, number four has never been...
Really?
No. I mean, Carol Warren had one.
Thing is, because of his hearing aid, that, the light phone will pick up a high pitched squeal that we can't hear, and it'll make it get more finite. So it'll make his voice a lot louder. It shouldn't be doing that, but...
We just did about two or three months ago, we hit this, so it would record.
Yeah, and it's been doing a pretty good job of that.
It didn't record.
Right.
It's off. It was off the whole time.
Tested.
I think you hit the record button.
All right. In the...
That's our, that's our audio recording.